Where's Jeff? Oh, yeah. We should call him out. We will. Do you want to? I'd love you to. No. I don't know. Yeah, give it to Eric. So where is that? Oh, yeah. All right, are we all here? We'll go ahead and call the July 15th City Council meeting order. If everyone would please rise and make the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the body of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, from under doubt, individual liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the announcements, we'll make one quick announcement. We have a very esteemed former member of the city staff, Mr. Jeff Hill on attendance. Jeff was our city engineer for a number of years and we miss him even though he's gone to work elsewhere. Had to embarrass you, Jeff.
Some things I miss him more than others.
So first, we'll recognize the HSE High School State Champions. If they would rise and if there's a coach or a member that would like to introduce them, that'd be great. Do you all want to come forward? And Coach, do you want to say something? You want to talk us through the progression through the state tournament? Where do you want it? That way. Come out, guy.
Coach, you want to say anything about the team? What they did? Yeah, really, really special. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We have an incredibly special year, so for the first time in history, we've got HSE. We've got the major city finals, fortunate enough to win. And I want to just say real quick, Senior Cam Bolli, Senior Tyler Schweitzer, Senior Matt Giacchiuucci, Senior Anthony Eggers, Senior Gray Sidroski, Junior Cole Wale, Senior Michael Dillon, Junior Dylan Gray, and Junior Cole Braverson. And then the legend Penny Sykes. Great season, played well. We set out to win the Mud Socks series. So for all of you guys on the red side, that's something we strive for every year. It's given to the winner of two of three between Fishers and HSE. We won that for the first time in a couple of years. For the first time in 17 years in life with the conference. We won a conference by a win for Dawson. And finished the season with 11 wins to close it out. So had a lot of great community support. And it was an incredibly fun run. And we'll miss these guys. So we're glad to be here. Other parents who want to take the picture?
Just got a small token of appreciation for representing us. Congratulations.
We'll read that part. I can tell you.
If you all would like to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you'd like to leave, we'll give you just a minute to go ahead and get out.
Get out.
As they're leaving, I have one announcement before Eric reads a proclamation. And that is just formally Brad Dreamer, who has served on the nonprofit committee. We thank him for, I think, two or three years, two years, Brad's service. He is resigning and Todd Zimmerman has agreed to go ahead and serve. So just for the record, Todd Zimmerman will be a part of that committee. Eric?
We're reading a proclamation on National Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city Fishers. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities, that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, and improve the quality of the air we breathe. And whereas our parks and recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Therefore, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Fishers. And all residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you, Eric. The first presentation group, Fishers Police Department. Chief?
Thank you, Councilmen Bradler, Senator Adams. Second by a seven in training curtain. So the routine is all right. This is right here. I say your name.
I, John Irvin.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The law of ordinance of the state which began.
The law of ordinance of the state of Indiana.
The rules and regulations of the Fishers Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Fishers Police Department.
And the law of order for that.
And the law of order for that.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a police officer, that's my word.
As a police officer, that's my word.
Very late.
Well, thank you, Chief, and welcome to all of them. We have a retirement. Is that for you, Scott?
Come on up, Jason. We have the complete circle of employee life here tonight. We have people being sworn in and a gentleman to my left who's retiring after 23 years of distinguished service, Roger Riker. I got to know Roger Riker when I was an intern, believe it or not. Roger was working here in our Public Works Department, Engineering and Public Works Department. Roger has overseen the infrastructure development of our city. He is responsible and has been responsible for years of private development in terms of infrastructure. So when a developer paves a road, when a developer puts stormwater or sewer infrastructure in to ensure the welfare, the safety, and the financial responsibility of our city to make sure that they do it the way that they're supposed to do it so we can ensure that we have long-term financial or physical assets, Roger was a guy out there doing that. What I can tell you about Roger personally, he's one of the nicest people I've ever met in your entire life. He's always had a positive attitude. And whenever I've interacted with Rogers, he's been a wonderful individual to work with. And I know Jason Taylor, our Engineering Director, would like to say a few words before we present Roger, a token of our appreciation. Jason?
Thank you. Like the mayor had said, we're here to honor Roger and all the time he's served with us and all the great things he's done. In honor of that, he's requested I keep it short and sweet. But he has, when I came onboard the first time here at the city, it was a whirlwind. And he was instrumental in helping me understand what is going on in the development side of things and making sure we get the right assets. And we are accepting them into our inventory. He's been a great mentor in the short time that we've worked together. And I know that he's going to enjoy his retirement here coming up soon. So I just want to say thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome. I think we may reach out to Roger in his retirement and ask him to come spend a few hours with us in the summertime to make sure we cover all of our bases on infrastructure. So I don't think it's the last time you've seen Roger. And he loves to plow snow, so maybe we'll bring him back.
All right. Thank you, Roger. Best to you. John, Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Rich. Last Wednesday on July the 10th, the Finance Committee met. And the following items on the agenda were recommended for approval for this evening's meeting on the Consent Agenda, item 6B. On the Budget Financial, item 8, 9, 10, and 11. In addition, we took a look at the year-to-date performance of the city. We're pretty much in line with our budget. Obviously, the budget season's coming. We also took a little deeper dive in kind of the health insurance and reimbursement there, which is something we're keeping an eye on. So that was what happened in the Budget Finance Committee.
Thank you, John. Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by, who was that?
Me.
John? Motion by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Moving to item 7. Next.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. My item tonight is the stations. Every time. As we look at this project agreement for your review tonight, I just wanted to give a little bit of a snapshot and walk down through memory lane of how we've gotten to this phase of the project. So if you recall, in 2016, we announced the first phase of what is now the yard at Fishers District. It was a $40 million investment, really focused on retail. And the highlight of that was the culinary accelerator. As Thompson Thrift and the city started looking at the potential for this site and the interest that had already started to come about, everyone realized that there was a missed opportunity here for a multifamily development and some mixed use. That is what led us to Phase 2 of this development, which was an additional $30 million worth of investment here. It included and is under construction, a 255 multifamily unit development and a parking garage. So that Phase 1 and Phase 2 was a combined total of $70 million worth of investment. Today, we have Phase 3 of this project, which is called the Stations. It's a complementary use to the district, or Fishers District. It is the land formerly owned by the Reynolds family. And the home has been demolished. And they have plans for an office building, hotel, and townhomes, and some additional retail at the request of city council members during our negotiations. So to date, our complete project investment on behalf of Thompson Thrift is up to $90 million. The project agreement for your consideration tonight is to offer Thompson Thrift a 100% capture of new TIF that is generated on this site, just specific to this Phase 3. And then in return for that, they are agreeing to a 100% debt coverage and a minimum taxpayer agreement so that the city should not have to pay any sort of lit or property taxes towards this new project. The rendering here is of the 60,000 square foot office building that they plan on constructing. There might be a phased approach, but there has been considerable interest since they've begun marketing this. So we anticipate there will be a lot of interest there, and that could go quickly. The other site plan is included in the project agreement, but it shows the different areas of that Phase 3, the townhomes to the south, and then the area that's eligible for TIF, that tax minimum area to the north. Tonight, Eric LoJack is here from Thompson Thrift. If you'd like to come up and say anything?
Good evening. I'm Eric with Thompson Thrift. I'll just be very brief. We're thrilled to have this Phase 3 and to continue our partnership and our relationship with the City of Fishers. And we've been very fortunate to develop in many different states and many different municipalities. And we consider Fishers a leading city and municipality that offers a competent and thoughtful view of new development. So we're very thankful for your support.
So one additional thing I will add is the way that this development is going to really fill out that whole area. It's going to connect over to the Kroger parking lot that Sunbeam currently owns and provide that east-west connectivity from Ikea Way over to Cumberland Road. So this really is a great way for us to finish off this amazing project. And again, now bringing us up to $90 million worth of investment here. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions of council?
Seeing no questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion by Pete, seconded by John.
Make a couple of comments?
Yes.
I would not be in favor of this. And I've mentioned in the past, I think the site, I think the group's great, the project's great. But I think this particular portion of the site plan, I think that we're missing an opportunity to leave some of the drainage, some of the trees. That is what I believe is driving the request for some of the TIF dollars. I think there's a way to modify that, leave some of that drainage, leave some of the tree canopy so that in the future, I think that you could still make the performa work. I think the project would still be a success with some office, some hotel. But at the same time, you would have a different look when you look to the east as you build the residential. Right now, you do have somewhat of a tree line. And I'm not saying keep the whole tree line. I just mean pave, not all of it, but just pave up to some of it. So by doing that, then when you open up, I'm just trying to think, 10 to 15 years down the road, when the apartments are not brand-new, it's just something that, why would you want to be a resident there? To the west, you have that great activity of the yard. To the south, you have, you know, nice activity with the condos. But to the east, I think it would be a better representation in the future. And I think that we could work together on a performa. It would be advantageous to the developer and then also to the city. But I think that it would be important to leave that. And I mentioned that at the last time when this was up. So I just have that same comment and concern. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion has been made by Pete, seconded.
Well, I was going to mention that, too. I wanted to kind of see what we could do to kind of work together to change it a little bit because David brought up some good points. And so I was wondering if there's a way that maybe we could still make it work out, but leave the tree line. And I think aesthetically, it would make the project a lot better.
Let me suggest, okay, is the petitioner going to come up? I didn't know if any other questions by council members. But yeah, please come up, Eric.
Yeah, thank you for the comments. I guess my response to that would be that, as you can tell, the site, driven by the office and the hotel, is very tight on parking. And with the tree line and the drainage, it was necessary to fill the creek in and remove those trees in order to provide adequate parking for the hotel, the office, and the restaurant pad. And all of those things were needed in order to support the underlying economics of the deal.
I also understand you're phasing the TIF, correct? Based on the project development, which does help protect the city, too. You might comment to that, just so people have an appreciation.
I'm going to be supportive of this project. I've got some general misgivings about having for-sale product of those condos behind the hotel and just the aesthetic that that might bring, particularly to those that are right across the boulevard. I know the site plan is a little bit different than the first one, so it mitigates that a little bit. But I think the rest of it could be brought down with just how you landscape it and how that looks going through the boulevard right there from the Kroger parking lot to, I guess, what is being developed now.
Any other last comments?
Again, I'll call for the vote, but I'm hugely supportive of this. I think Thompson Thrift has proved an invaluable partner to the city in terms of not only doing the yard project when it started, but really starting to see a need and the way to make sure that yard project continue to be successful for long-term by adding the apartments there and then continuing on with our request. It was our request as a council to add in some commercial space because I think they originally came to us for something else. So it was really them kind of working with us to make sure that they got that amenity. Eric, I certainly appreciate your concerns. They're way off the road. You're not even going to see those things from the road at all back there. But again, I'm hugely supportive and very thankful, not only to Sunbeam and Thompson Thrift for bringing this project forward and making it an absolutely landmark project for the City of Fishers.
All right, anything more? Motion by Pete, seconded by John. All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So can you just raise your hands, those who are, again, just, okay. So we have 5-3. Noted?
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 8, is that Lisa? Can you address all of these together?
Yes, if you would let me. I was going to address 8, 9, and 10 together. And then we can do the public hearing for all of them. But it makes more sense to address them all together. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. So before you are three items regarding additional appropriations. Item number 8 and 9, the additional appropriation for rainy day and wheel tax. These were actually 2018-approved budget items. They did not get spent in 2018 when we switched to the new financial software. They didn't get encumbered to stay within the 18 budget. So there is, it's a net zero essentially effect there, just recovering the 2018 budget. It was decided after discussion with Munus that this was the cleaner way to do things for items 8 and 9. Item 10, the CCD fund. About this time last year, we embarked on a pretty intensive facility maintenance study. And after the budget had been approved and finalized, we kind of got what that facility study looked like. So that money will go to making repairs that are needed at our city buildings, especially the other fire stations excluding 91 and 93, and some of our city buildings here.
I think it's important to note, and Lisa did a great job of summarizing, just wanted to put an exclamation point on this. We're not coming to you for additional appropriations because we ran out of money, quote-unquote, and we need more money. These were money that we just did not have encumbered at the end of last year for projects. And so we're asking to additionally appropriate. But this is money that was left over from last year.
Yeah, so it just rolled into the fund balance. So it essentially is not new, new spend on those.
Rich, we need a public hearing.
For each item, Chris?
Yep, for 8, 9, and 10. So if you just want to separately call.
Very good. All right, so we'll open this up for a public hearing, item 8. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to come forward? If so, you'll have three minutes in which to speak. But if you'd state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on item 8. So then, can we, should we vote on this?
Go ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, seconded by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We will open up the public hearing for item 9. Are there any members of the public who wish to come forward to speak? Ma'am? Which one? No, not yet. At the end. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on item 9? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete to approve, seconded by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We will open the public hearing for item 10. Any members of the public wishing to speak on item 10? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item 11.
All right, the item before you is a continuation of the Skanel project agreement that was approved last month. So this ordinance will authorize bonds in the amount of up to $7 million. As a reminder, which Megan discussed last month, these are, will be issued in the name of the city, but the developer will purchase these bonds. So essentially, that makes them conduit debt for the city. And conduit debt does not show on the City of Fishers' balance sheet. It's a note disclosure essentially, just as more of an FYI. Conduit debt does really not factor into your bond rating from S&amp;P. Again, it's more of a note disclosure. On these, the developer will be on the hook regarding the debt service payments. One thing that, with the increment, as we discussed with TIF, the school corporation does get that increment growth. So it's estimated that when this project is complete, the schools will get almost $96,000 in additional tax revenue from these, from this new development. If there are no questions, I'd ask you to suspend the rules and have first, second, and third reading.
Very good. Thank you. So this is not a public hearing, correct?
It's not a public hearing. There was a public hearing held earlier today with a joint EDC and RNC meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion to suspend by Pete, seconded by Eric. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So because it's not, you need...
So you can only have first reading?
Okay.
Have first reading.
Have first reading.
All right, first reading. Item 12. Tony?
Good evening. Tony Bagato, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item before you is a rezone of a property on the north side of 131st Street, just north of the Fishers High School. It is zoned currently industrial, which through our research, when it was in Noblesville, it was residential, but in 2006 changed to industrial based on what was believed to be an error in our mapping. And now we believe it's an error in our mapping that we changed it to industrial. So we're just asking it to go back to single-family, R1. And here it is again, today currently is I1. So we don't believe, it's surrounded by industrial, so we don't, or I'm sorry, residential. So we don't believe industrial is the best use. And we'd like to just rezone it back to residential. So it's R1. We had a public hearing last week at the Plan Commission, and it was recommended for approval with no remonstration. I'm available for any questions.
Motion to approve.
Tony, I got a quick question. I drive by this area a couple of times a day. I don't have necessarily a question on this particular item, but there's some properties to the east of the one that's on the map, the one that we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
They're pretty rundown. Is there anything going on with those? They're being engulfed by trees and weeds and whatnot. Are they for sale? Are they...
Not that I'm aware of, but I can drive, have, you know, look out there and maybe get code enforcement involved if needed.
That's across from Fishers High School. Yeah. I think there's an old house and maybe a barn or two old homes.
Our building inspectors, I think, are well aware of...
Yeah, okay.
Of the issues.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I guess there was a motion by Pete, correct? Seconded by, seconded by Selena? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, passes. Thank you. Item 13.
Again, Tony Bagato, for the record, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item is a text amendment to the Nickel Plate Code District. This is for allowing a multifamily building type within the Village Center. Just to let you know, the other portions of the city that are zoned Village Center already allow multifamily. When this area was rezoned, we actually removed that component because there was initial concerns about how multifamily could work close to the school and some of the single... could work close to the school and some of the single-family development in this area. So now, with further research, and the Skanel project been in the works, we have looked at allowing multifamily only in the southern tip here of Lantern Road, highlighted in red. So the rest of the area that's in this gray block would still not allow multifamily building type. It would focus on single-family townhomes, triplexes, or duplexes. But just so you know, on the other side, multifamily is currently allowed on the, on the east side of Lantern Road. So this would, the southern tip would allow for a focal point development to create an entryway into the city, bring in like a real urban feel, so you know you're coming right into our downtown core. And would again allow for the Skanel project that had an EDA approved last month. And so here is the renderings right now. It'll have to comply with our nickel plate code, and all the architectural will meet that and go through the nickel plate review committee process. So with that, staff's here to answer a question. Again, it's a text amendment, just to focus on that southern tip there for allowing multifamily building types.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One no. David? Second, correct? Okay. Very good. Motion passes. Item 14.
Okay, the last item for me, again, Tony Begato, Director of Planning and Zoning, is a change to the Reynolds PUD. This is the PUD that's impacted off of State Road 37, where Harley-Davidson was recently built. Because of the right-of-way there, they will be losing about eight feet of right-of-way with the future roadwork. If, right now, when you lose right-of-way, you would have to measure setbacks from the future property line. That would make the new Harley-Davidson building non-conforming. In addition, they have a vacant lot here to the north of the Harley-Davidson that they'd like to build and maintain the same building front setback to where Harley-Davidson was built just two years ago. And so the request is to allow a text amendment to, so that the front setback will be measured from the right-of-way as it exists today and not where it'll exist in the future. Again, that'll just mean, when they develop the new building, that it'll be in line with where Harley-Davidson is in today, as well as the parking lot. So it'll all look like the, consistent with the Harley-Davidson project. Staff is here to recommend our approval, and it was recommended for approval by the planning commission last week. Do you have any questions, staff?
Motion to approve.
Can I just point out one thing? I know the question was asked at planning commission to Kevin, you know, what the appearance would be about the change. And I think the point was, there really would be, from the street, no, no difference that we're gonna see. So that, that was a valid question.
Correct, yeah. It would be just in line, no closer than where the Harley-Davidson building is. So it's the same as what you'd see today.
Good, thank you. Motion made by Pete, who made a second, or was there? Was there a second? Second by Selena, again? All right, motion by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion passes. All right. Any other unfinished or new business? Chris, mayor?
No.
Thank you. Okay, we are now to the community comments section. If there are members here in attendance that would wish to speak, you'll be given three minutes in which to speak. If you just state your name and address for the record before speaking. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Marilyn Bell, and I live at 14357 Harrison Parkway, Fishers, Indiana. I wanna say, imagine paying mortgage and taxes on a property for 20 years, then to be told you don't have a right to say who can come and go on your own property. Or being in your own garage, working, minding your own business. You bend down to pick something up, and you look up and there's a strange man that you've never seen before in your garage. I have had those two experiences, or that experience, often. And by that, I mean you have people going through the neighborhood, selling items. So I've found out the Fishers' Police Department gives you a little sticker that you can post on your door stating that you don't want to be bothered. They don't care about this. It means nothing to them. They either ring my doorbell. If I don't answer, then they're knocking on my door. I have a side glass where they're knocking on the side glass, seven days a week. I thought they would rest on Sunday, but they don't. Okay. So I, you know, I work, and I come home, and I took a picture, but I'm one of these people that I don't know how to operate my phone and put it up on the screen. I come home to all of these. Sometimes I have, and this is just the ones I've stored saving up in the last, I guess, six months. These are not all of them. Sometimes I have things posted on my door, on my glass. These were posted on my glass. This one was right over the sticker. Okay? So to me, I know that this is, may not be important to some people, but to me, I should have a right to say, I don't want you on my property. I don't want you hanging doorknobs. You can't put them on the mailbox. I don't want you on my property. And when I come home and I see, one day I had four of these. This was on the glass. This was covering the sticker. And as you can see, some of them are the same. I've called these people. It does no good. I've called. This, uh, who's your contractors? I've called them four times. It does no good. Told them I had it posted. It does no good. So they don't respect the sticker that's from the police department. They don't respect your right not to be bothered. We should be able to have something where if I have that sticker or a sign on my door saying, "No solicitation," I don't need your items on my door, on any portion of my property. And I understand utility companies, fine. Schools, fine. But other people, salespeople, this is ridiculous. And these are not all of them. And like I said, I took a picture so you could kinda see. One store is at the top, and then they're all over the place. And I'm on a corner lot. So when people drive down the street to them, it says, "There's nobody home there." And Fishers, I was trying to get the statistics of our burglaries, but I wasn't able to, you know, get it. But I'm sure you've heard how much crime we have in the area where we used to not have. But this is an indication that you're not at home.
Ms. Bell, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if I could ask, if you could leave those with me, if that's okay?
Thank you, pardon.
Could you leave those doorknackers with me?
More than half.
Thank you.
Mayor, how is this enforced generally?
Yeah, I would like to address. I live in Britton Falls, and two years ago, we had the same problem. And I went around and put that sticker on every door, 700 doors in the subdivision. And you're right, they won't. But do you call the police when they come?
I do, and I feel, I feel sorry for the police department, simply because they have other important issues. So when I'm calling them, I could be taking them from somebody that's been physically attacked.
Sure.
And I do have the non-emergency number.
Right.
And one time, they even, because it was on a Sunday, I think it was, I couldn't believe it. And they, it was switched over to Noblesville. And the officers are so, they really are friendly. The group that you saw here, when I first moved to Fishers, it was only 12 officers.
You've been here.
So it's such a vast difference. And like I said, they don't respect this.
No, they don't.
You know? And I thought, wow.
We, we in Britton Falls all call the police. And have you, on your phone, you've got the Fishers app?
Yeah.
That works good, too.
I have to put it on there.
Okay. If, if you're literate with the phone, the app, go ahead and put it on. If not, just take a picture of them. That helps. But in Britton Falls, they respond. And they'll take, if they have a license, they'll take their license away. If they don't, I'm not sure what they do.
If they know, we gotta catch them in the act. But if, the good news is, they were kind enough to leave their...
Oh, yeah, stupid enough.
I've called them, but they don't stop. The who's your contractors?
Well, we'll, we'll call on behalf of you. We'll follow up on you.
I think we have some first assignments for six officers.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But, you know, the police officers, they are kind enough. They will come by. But I just feel bad that I'm calling, you know. But what I'm saying is, there should be an ordinance. There should be. I don't know how you can do it, that if you have this sticker, do not, because my next, now, when the gentleman, and I mean, I was facing the driveway, and I just bent down, you know, you can't look at everything all the time, but I just turned around to pick something up, and it took me a minute to get up, and here was this guy. And I, I really, I'm not a, I'm kinda nervous when I'm around, you know, like now. But I couldn't even speak, and he kept walking.
Do you care?
Well, I tell you, I don't care. I probably be shot myself in the foot. But something told me finally, "Put your hand in your pocket." And I put my left hand in my pocket, but I'm right-handed. Do you understand what I'm saying? But some, "Put your hand in your pocket." And I guess that made him think I had something. But what if, you know, and then he turned around and went on. But that's, it's just too much.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we'll make sure to follow up with the police department, with all these folks, and remind them of what the requirements are in order for them to keep their...
And maybe when they pass this out.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else from the public? Just a second, Jocelyn. No, go ahead. Pam, do you wanna go?
Hello, Pam Vole, President of the Hamilton Proper Homeowners Association. First of all, I do wanna start out thanking, thanking the city and everything for paving our street. We really appreciate Hawthorne Ridge getting paved and being, you know, on the target to get completed. And they actually started grinding it all out today, so. But the reason I am here is that we really tried to coordinate this project with Calumet. I sent several emails back in April and May, tried to get Dave Thomas, different people from Calumet to meet with me, so that we could sort of coordinate, work with our irrigation company. I know irrigations, I guess, are not supposed to be in the right-of-way, but they've been there 30 years. And, and we didn't have any luck with that coordination. And we just, we expected some repairs, but they have outright come through the area and have been very, very disrespectful of our property. Breaking things multiple times, leaving a mess. And all I'm asking for, we tried meeting with Calumet and asking them to work with us on getting some of these repairs done. And we're flatly told by Ron Lancer, which I know is with the City of Fishers and Calumet, that they're not responsible for anything in the right-of-way. And the cost is mounting up. It's not a huge amount, but it's just, it's going to take a long time to recover. And I'm just asking the City of Fishers to please make them accountable for coming back and working with us and trying to get this resolved. Any questions?
Questions?
We're aware of the issue, and I'll, I'll follow Calumet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
I did send a email with some pictures and stuff to you guys today.
Okay.
Both Pete and Chris.
Thank you, Pam. Jocelyn?
Thank you. Good evening. Jocelyn Vare, 13873 Carolina Court in Fishers. A question, I was hoping that you could summarize, just the overall approach as new housing comes online and is evaluated, how affordable housing is woven into that conversation?
Okay. Do we, I mean, that's a broad topic.
It's a very broad topic. So that's what I was just wondering, if there was a overall principle or approach as you think that through with the new housing options coming online?
Okay. Would you like an answer tonight, or can we get back to you?
Oh, sure. Of course, of course. It is, is a big topic. I was just curious about, again, the overall approach.
Okay. I'll take a quick stab at it, but I would say, I would ask for others who have input, such as our planning director, mayor, deputy mayor of over planning. But I, I would say, there, there is a tremendous amount of sensitivity to allowing for housing for, you know, all different income groups and a recognition that there is a need for workforce housing. I mean, I think that there are site issues that play into positioning where that is. So it's a, it's a pretty complicated topic, and I think we've tried to be sensitive. And in fact, we've approved a couple of projects that address that workforce need. Certainly, I think you're aware of what is happening on Lena Row, but I think we'll continue to be sensitive to that. If there are members of either the planning commission or mayor, others who wanna comment to that, I mean, those are some quick thoughts. But I think we recognize that. I, I just don't know if there's a universal policy that I guess we've, we've come up with.
I think everyone in the country is trying to solve that particular question, to be frank. It's an easy thing to throw out there. It's a very difficult thing to solve. I know that our planning director, along with deputy mayor, had the meeting with developers to identify creative and innovative solutions to bring down the cost curve, so that we can deliver homes at a lower price point. So we're working on that. The multifamily side, obviously, we're one of the first communities in Hamilton County to actually try to do a workforce housing project. We're also looking at senior projects as well. We have a senior living component that needs to be affordable. And so I think, in general, we're trying to crack that code, just like every other community in the country.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, wait.
My name is Wayne McCarg. I live at 10915 300 Yard Drive. I'm President of the Persimmon Woods Association and also on the Board of Directors of Hamilton Proper and serve as Secretary. Been coming to these meetings for three or four years. It's the first time I've ever been up here, so you can tell it's important to me. But Pam had told me what was coming down the street. And so by the time they got to Persimmon Woods, I was there with my iPhone and my recorder and making daily notes as to exactly what happened. And I can tell you that, to me, it was devastation and it was very unnecessary. And I've documented it. And we met, Ron Coslow, CPA, our treasurer and I, met with their representative, and we were told twice to get things fixed and to send the bill to them. And we did that. And as soon as the first bill hit them, the vendor was told, "No, send it to the City of Fishers. Fishers will pay for that." Well, Fishers shouldn't pay for it. They didn't create the damage, and we're not asking that they do. But what I've done is, I've prepared a packet of text and also photographs of exactly what went on. And I've also recorded a meeting between the city representative and our association and the people who are doing what I call the devastation. We haven't had any water since June the 27th. They've torn it up three times. And today, you can't just go get somebody to repair sprinklers. They are very, very busy. We would like to get our mulch replaced, where they tore up our stones by, I don't know, throwing them on top of each other. I don't know how they did it. This is all photographed. And all we're asking is that we made, we made whole, not a penny more, not a penny less. So, Rich, I have prepared it for you, and I'll give it to you after the meeting, based on what I just heard. I think maybe it goes to the mayor. But I'd like you to look at this and advise us what you think we should do. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, would you like that?
Yeah, sure. I'll take it.
I'd like to defer.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, no, 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 thank you.
Eric Muller will get back to you on that, Wayne, too. Now, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I know that you all, and I've had discussions with you, and I can appreciate the concern. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Pete, second by Selena. Thank you.